Good evening. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the San Angelo Independent School District Board of Trustees, and I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. We have a quorum, and I appreciate the board members that are present. Dr. Taylor Kingman, one of our board members, will not be here tonight, but the rest of us are here, so we're ready to go forward. At this time, I'd like to ask the pastor of Bellmore Baptist Church, Matt Wood, come forward and give us our invocation.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to be part of what I love, and that is to pray to the Lord. I do want to read a short scripture here. I was about to make a joke and say that I was told that, you know, I had to limit my time to 44 minutes and 59 seconds, but I'm pretty sure some of my church members could attest that they don't believe I could do it. Psalm 30 says, "I will exalt you, Lord, for you lifted me out of the depths and did not let my enemies gloat over me. Lord, my God, I called to you for help, and you healed me. You, Lord, brought me up from the realm of the dead. You spared me from going down to the pit. Sing the praises of the Lord, you, his people. Praise his holy name, for his anger lasts only a moment, but his favor lasts a lifetime. Weeping may stay for the night, but rejoicing comes in the morning. When I felt secure, I said, 'I will never be shaken.' Lord, when you favored me, you made me a royal mountain, and you made it stand firm; but when you hid your face, I was dismayed. To you, Lord, I called; to the Lord, I cried for mercy. What is gained if I am silenced? If I go down to the pit, will the dust praise you? Will it proclaim your faithfulness? Hear, Lord, and be merciful to me. Lord, be my help. You turned my wailing into dancing. You removed my sackcloth and clothed me with joy, that my heart may sing your praises and not be silent. Lord, my God, I will praise you forever." King David wrote this psalm at the dedication of his own house. I thought that was an appropriate one for us this evening, and let's pray. God, we lift you up, for you are the only one worthy. You have brought us here. You brought us here tonight. You brought us to this point. You've brought us past the last couple of years. You've brought us through them, Lord. Not a one of us, I believe, has not been touched by those who have been sickened or passed away from COVID, from the things that have happened both nationally and internationally in the last couple of years, Lord. The tragedies that have been brought. You have brought us through. Though there has been and continues to be a great threat of sickness and death around us, you have kept us. For that, Lord, we praise you. May your people praise you, for your anger is like that of good teachers. It's for our good, and it does not last long. For we thank you. We ask for your mercy during this meeting, and as we begin the new school year soon, we ask that joy may come where there has been sorrow. May singing and dancing break out where silence has reigned. Thank you for this board. Thank you for administrators and teachers, for our students, our parents, and guardians. For those who are here in attendance, Lord, we thank you. And again, we ask for your mercy and your grace. Thank you for all that you've given us in Christ, for forgiveness of sin, for identity, and for purpose. Lord, for all of this, we join with David, and we say, may we praise your name forever. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pastor, just before you sit down, in my understanding, in your history, you were here at Goodfellow and then came back?
I was. I was here 14 years ago, which seems almost impossible, but I was. My oldest son was one month old at the time when we moved here. I spent about six months, and I was a member of Bellmore Baptist Church then, under their former pastor. And then the Lord called us back so many years later. I had no idea the way he took us, we'd be right back here, but I've met so many people with a similar story. San Angelo seems to always call people back.
Well, we're glad you're back, and we appreciate you helping us tonight.
Thank you.
All right. We normally would have our pledge of allegiance and pledge to the Texas pledge, also led by elementary students from SAISD, but they're home for the summer. So if everybody will stand, I will lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have a script that we read at every meeting. It kind of sets the parameters for the meeting, and I will read that for our record tonight. Again, I want to welcome everyone that's here. As president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School Districts, I want to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting, and also welcome those who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board meeting workshop last week. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and administrators, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Anyone speaking to us in public comment, please understand that under the Texas Open Meeting Act requirements, we are not allowed to reply or to address any comments that you made. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. At this time, I will turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk for some recognitions. And Dr. Gomez will help also. Good.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, it is with great delight this evening that we recognize Mr. Joe Gondar. Mr. Gondar, if you could come up, please. And Dr. Detloff, could you please come up as well? If you'll stand here facing the audience, please. This evening, we recognize Mr. Joe Gondar, our principal of Lincoln Middle School, for being named the Texas Association of Secondary Principals, Region 15 Secondary Principal of the Year. The Secondary Principal of the Year award honors and recognizes school leaders whose exemplary performance prepares students for successes in a global community. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Gondar for his service to students, parents, families, staff, and SAISD. Mr. Gondar is a testimony to our SAISD, our people make the difference. One more round of applause to Mr. Gondar. All right. So we do have Mr. Gondar's family here as well, so we want to recognize both of them, so we know that that's part of what makes him get up each and every day as in addition to serving for others. But we would not do right if we didn't recognize his special guest of honor. So thank you both for being here this evening. You guys are welcome to also take a picture if y'all want. It's just like when the kids are up here for the pledges. So Mrs. Gondar, you can take a picture if you want. And I know that Ms. Turk is going to take a picture. I was going to say Ava. Would you like to come take a picture with your daddy?
Joe?
Mr. Gondar, you have to look at Mr. Parker, please, sir.
Yeah, we're going to let you go around, but tell us the name of your guest. Would you announce your wife and child?
Yeah, so this is Rachel Gondar, who also is an SAISD employee who makes a world of difference for us. So she's a counselor at Lakeview High School, Rachel Gondar, and this is their daughter Ava.
Farrah. Thank you, Farrah. Now, come around.
Mr. Gondar, you have to come this way, please, just like the kids, and shake all of our hands.
Okay. Okay, Whitney.
To go from one great contributor to our San Angelo ISD to another great contributor to our community. Thank you, President Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Tonight, it is my great honor to recognize distinguished members of our local media who are invaluable partners with San Angelo ISD in this past year of unprecedented challenges. These worthy honorees routinely show that they understand they have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools, a responsibility that they each have taken very seriously. San Angelo ISD's media honor roll is a way for us to show our appreciation of their fair and balanced reporting about the district, support of public education, and celebration of our students. In addition to that, this year, we would be remiss if we did not also recognize the incredibly important role these media partners played in communicating critical information to our students, families, and staff when we worked to keep our schools open and safe, not only during a pandemic, but also during a water crisis and historic weather. The ability to rely on good media partners in times of crisis is vitally important, and we work together to keep San Angelo strong. Each of tonight's honorees are advocates of the district, our students and the children of San Angelo, and our educators, true partners in service of our San Angelo community. At this time, Molly and I are proud to introduce the 2021 Media Honor Roll Class for San Angelo ISD. Please hold your applause for the end, which is when we will ask y'all to come forward and give you your certificates. When we will have our honorees, who are in attendance, accept their certificates and gather for a group photo. So we'll begin with Rick Andrews of Foster Communications, Kixi 94.7 FM, Mark Brown of Fox West, Texas, Manny Diaz of San Angelo Live, Shay Harris of Concho Sports Network, Joe Hyde of San Angelo Live, Fred Key of Foster Communications, Rick Mantooth of Foster Communications, Carolyn Miller of Family Magazine, Carolyn McEnroe of KLST, John Tufts of San Angelo Standard Times. And finally, of utmost importance, we will recognize Gregorio Gutierrez of Connexion in memoriam. We simply could not recognize media honors without sharing our appreciation, respect, and admiration of the late Mr. Gutierrez. His lifetime support of public education and enduring legacy of not only fair and balanced reporting, but also ensuring consistent communication to and with our Spanish and bilingual communities in San Angelo is an immeasurable contribution to San Angelo and SAISD. Mr. Gutierrez worked at KSJT, Spanish Radio, created a pilot program entitled Simplemente Latino for KLST, and founded the first bilingual newspaper in San Angelo, Connexion Hispana, which has expanded and grown. We will miss him, but are proud to continue his legacy and work in partnership with Connexion. So today, we honor Mr. Gutierrez, and accepting on behalf of Mr. Gutierrez will be Vice President of Connexion and widow to Mr. Gutierrez, Ms. Gutierrez. So please join San Angelo ISD in honoring Mr. Gutierrez and all of our Media Honor Roll Class of 2021. Thank you all for your service to our community and to the profession of journalism. Congratulations. And at this time, Dr. Detloff, will you please join our honorees for a photo up front? So thank y'all.
All right. Circle it. Whitney, have them circle around.
Yes, and then if y'all can go around this way so that our members of our boards can thank you personally. We appreciate you all so much. Thank you. We really, seriously, it's been such a... No, certainly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. We're all the same. It's time. Every now and then, only for the important people.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay. Well, next on our agenda is what I mentioned earlier in my opening remarks about public comments for topics not on the agenda this evening. Is anyone signed up? Becky, did you know of?
No, no. So, Whitney, is there anyone?
If there is anyone that wants to speak now on some item not on the agenda, come forward. I don't see anyone, so we'll go on to, now that we went by our minutes. So we need to approve our minutes for the June 14th Special Finance Pre-Agenda Meeting and our June 21st Regular Board Meeting.
Do we approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gallegos and a second by Mr. Lehman. Is there any other board comment about these agenda items? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now, we'll go to Dr. Ritter for a report on academic programs.
Making sure the clicker works this time. Perfect. All right, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, we're happy to bring to you tonight an update on our iPad initiative to get innovative devices into the hands of all of our students in SAISD, along with all of the administrators and teachers and educators in our district. I wanted to start, though, with a piece out of the Visioning Document that we have worked through before through strategic planning and through the development of a learner profile, our community-based accountability system and the pillars, and the work of setting goals, that everything that we do is grounded in the work of the Visioning Document. And so this part that I extracted from the Visioning Document for our why tonight is from the Digital Learning Environment section, that digitization of information processing power is expanding exponentially and is changing the world, our lives, and our communities at an overwhelming speed. To be viable, schools must adapt to this new environment. We must embrace and seize technology's potential to capture the hearts and minds of this digital generation so that the work designed for them is more engaging and respects their superior talents with digital devices and connections. The potential of learning anywhere, anytime, any path, any pace, must be embraced. Future learning will be a combination of learning at school, virtual learning, learning at home, and in the community. And this was written as part of the TASSA Visioning Document that was written in 2010. And it's really quite prophetic, knowing what we've just gone through with pandemic and the pandemic learning. And we did learn through that how very, very important digital innovation and learning and devices in the hands of our students and teachers really is. So tonight, we just wanted to update you on the timeline of the rollout for our devices. First, we will be starting with our high school. And the goal, of course, through all of this is to be getting a device, an iPad, in the hands of all of our San Angelo ISD students over the course of the next school year and into the beginning of 21-22 school year. Am I saying that right? Yeah, 21-22, 22-23, actually. Yes. So we have the first group of high school students who will be getting their iPads to start this fall. Our teachers will also be receiving iPads so they can deliver instruction through Apple Learning Classroom in their classrooms. So each teacher is receiving an iPad, an Apple TV, and a Logitech Crayon for their iPad device. The teachers will be picking their iPads up July 29th and 30th at Lakeview and at Central. We have Apple training with Apple coaches who will be providing training in August, August 12th and 13th at Central, and the 13th at Lakeview. And in September through April, we have monthly training with an Apple coach. And so these are actual Apple coaches who will be helping to train our teachers because we understand the importance of providing that professional learning for them as they also are learning how to utilize their iPad devices to help deliver digital instruction for our students. Our digital innovation facilitators, Brandon Legon and Jennifer Fek, will also be available for coaching throughout the year on the campuses with our teachers. And our student device distribution will be occurring in August, coming up before the school year. So our students will be having... They will get their devices to have as school begins for them. So the idea, though, with this, with instruction in the classroom, is that our teachers are going to be learning how to deliver instruction directly to the device. So they design the instruction on their iPad, and it delivers directly to the individual devices in their classroom as the students come into the classroom and sit down and engage in instruction there. And so everything is designed individually for them, and they have their own iPad and their device with their coursework, their resources, everything available to them and accessible to them on their iPad device. Our middle school plan, again, each teacher receiving the iPad, Apple TV, and the Logitech Crayon. We're going to be distributing them to the teachers in September, the days to be determined by the campuses. We want the teachers as early as possible to go ahead and have their devices so they're learning more about their iPads. They will be engaging in Apple training with the digital innovation facilitators once a month per campus with additional coaching available as needed by the teachers. And our student device distribution for middle school will be January 2022. We're spreading it out so that we're making sure that we have the capacity to support the rollout of these devices with our teachers and our students. So we're spacing it. So high school in the fall, and then in January, our middle schools. And then lastly, our plan for elementary. Each teacher, again, receiving the same, iPad, Apple TV, and the Logitech Crayon. And our plan, this is tentative. We're going to see how things are going. And so we are going to be gauging this final piece of our timeline based on how things are rolling out with the high school and middle school. But, and we also did not want all of these devices, the new devices, to be all at once because when we come into replacement cycle and we don't have ESAR funding available, we want to be able to support the replacement cycle for our iPads for our students and teachers as well. So our teacher distribution for elementary, we're planning sometime in the spring, tentatively, with the student distribution being August of 2022 for them to actually have one-to-one devices in elementary for the next school year. The digital innovation facilitators, again, they will work with the campus principals to see which classes will be one-to-one so they can provide support through monthly training or as needed for their coaching. So this is our plan. It goes back to that Visioning Document and the importance of how we are really committed to, and you as a board, we're so appreciative of your commitment to making sure that our students are provided with the tools that they need to be future-ready and that we can deliver this instruction to them in a way that is going to be very personal to them and very meaningful to them. And we look forward to providing you with more updates as we go. That will be part of our academic report and just keeping you on top of the work. We're very, very excited about it. So all of those iPads that you've been improving the purchase of, this is the plan for them, and we're really looking forward to that. So thank you all. Are there any questions?
I remember, and I don't know whether it was five years ago, 10 years ago, Mr. Dindel and I, when the school board was at the school board convention, went to an Apple breakout meeting, and they had a presentation, and they were talking about iPads and students using iPads and so forth. And Mr. Dindel and I, that's interesting idea. I wonder if we could ever make that happen and how they could use iPads. And had, like you said, being prophetic, we had no idea that there would come a time that that would become necessary. And I do give our administrative staff a lot of credit for implementing, to some extent, the virtual platform that made it, I'm not saying easy, but easier to implement on a moment's notice as we had to. You guys did an amazing job to make that happen. And so, as I said, I give you credit for that. But this is a program that I'm glad to see that we're following through with, and we're going to do even a better job. I think you call it one-on-one, so every student has a device, correct?
Yes.
And hopefully, we will now be able to use it. Because I think what you're talking about in the classroom versus just having to use it virtually. We don't want to have to go back there.
We don't.
All right.
Yes. We also will be using this through our Learning Management System, Schoolage, which you've heard us talk about. We used this past year with the virtual learning. But it will be the... But it will be the way through which the teachers help to deliver a lot of their instruction and information to the students. And we just feel like we're poised for this. And we were kind of thrust into having to move forward with a lot of that through the Virtual Learning Academy last year. But we've learned a lot of lessons through that. But then we've also learned some things that we don't want to go back to. So to be able to provide students with an iPad that they will then be able to take with them and use at home and back to the classroom and just have that as their own personal learning device, we're very, very excited to be able to offer that to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter.
I just had to see Mr. Parker if I can get my microphone working. I just have one additional comment. I just want to thank our board for, really, to have the visioning for SAISD to make these technologies a reality for our kids in our school system. Also, I just want to highlight and continue to lift up our learner profile and our educator profile and how the attributes of those two profiles are really seamless with the many capabilities that these devices offer our students. So, you know, as we think about transforming our classrooms into innovative learning spaces, I think this initiative that the board has so graciously provided us just really is the catalyst for continued learning as we move forward. So all our kids will have a device, you know, before we kind of operated in a one-to-X. But truly, with the most recent purchases, we will be at a one-to-one ratio in our school system very soon. So we're excited about that. And I just want to thank the technology staff and curriculum and instruction department for making this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Ritter, if I can ask one question? I was just curious to know if the iPad will replace textbooks or will we maybe do that in the future so that kids don't have to carry around all their books and the iPad?
That is, honestly, it's our goal. And most, if not all, of our textbooks, when we purchase textbooks with our instructional material allotment, we purchase the digital version. And really, all of the secondary textbooks, at least, do have those digital versions. And so those will be loaded onto their iPads and available to them as instructional resources on their iPads. So we'll still have, you know, classroom sets, plans for things in classrooms as well as we make the transition. But the plan is that we do get there and I hope that we see a lot of progress in that area over the next school year. Absolutely.
One phone will come in, Mr. Parker. I know that when we talked about this beginning way back when, four, five years ago, the device was affordable, but the textbook, the digital textbooks were the expensive part of the puzzle as we worked forward through that. And so I know that it seems through administration that we've formed a strong partnership with Apple and their team to help us manage this jump forward. And so it's a testament to our admin team because the Apple, the Apple team has jumped on board with us to help us manage the chaos as we move forward with this stuff. So thanks for, not only the partnership that you created with Apple, but the administration's work in the process moving forward.
Thank you so much. And it is, it is a strong partnership and we just really do look forward to those next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. We'll now go to our consent items. We have consent items A through G. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of consent items A through G.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dindel and a second by Ms. Isabel Flint to approve our consent items. I'll go through those. A is consider approval of bids for the Child Nutrition Department for the 2021-2022 school year, removal of material from grease traps. B is consider wireless site survey. C, consider bid number 21-010 athletic equipment. D, consider RFQ number 21-014 Lone Star Tennis Court resurfacing. E, consider update to board policy DEC local. F, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2021 under Texas Government Code 551.074. And there's an addendum that we were given tonight also with one more name. And then G, consider board meeting dates and activities. Is there any other board discussion on these items? Is there any public comment on any of these items? If not, I'll call a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right. This is a proposed amendment for, as we have every month, for our district official budget to the general fund. Dr. McFarland?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. The general fund amendment that's before you needs a correction, just for clarification. Number one, it does remain the same, that there is no monetary differences in what we're doing here. Anytime you change the amount in a function of our budget, moves from one function to another, one, if amounts increase or decrease in those functions, that's required to bring to the board for an amendment. We're moving approximately $125,000 around in our budget here to get to the correct functional category as it would be classified. And the change would be, there's 714 going from function 11 to function 13, which is as the amendment says. But then there should be 125,000 going from function 51 to function 53, not 61. Okay? So that's the only difference that's in that budget amendment that's incorrect that is now corrected. Any questions?
Anyone have a question for Dr. McFarland? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval of the general fund budget amendment for July 19, 2021, with changes to function codes, which result in no monetary difference and with the addendum that Dr. McFarland mentioned, from code 61 to code 53, I believe, is what he said.
Right.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second by Mr. Lehman. Is there any other board comment or discussion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes. Dr. McFarland, you're up again about our setting a M and O tax rate.
Yes, sir. The public meeting is required by law to be set by the Board of Trustees. It is required that we, that the district post a, in the newspaper and media outlets, on the website, that we post a proposed tax rate for the upcoming school fiscal year. In order to make that as transparent a process as possible, what we try to do is name the date of the board meeting that we will name a, or adopt a proposed rate. What happens then is, once that proposed rate is adopted by the Board of Trustees, then we have from 10 days, no earlier than 10 days and no further out than 30 days to get that published in the newspaper and publications on our website so that it can be transparent and the public can have an opportunity to view what our proposed tax rate is. And then they have the opportunity to come and comment at our set meeting to adopt a tax rate. So what this is asking you to do is, on our pre-agenda meeting on August the 9th, would be the date that we would recognize as we are going to propose a tax rate to post for publication. Any questions I can answer?
We discussed this some last week. Anyone have any other questions, Dr. McFarland? All right, well, we do need to have a motion and it's an action item. I'll make the motion that we set August 9, 2021, as the date of the board meeting in which the Board of Trustees will adopt a proposed tax rate for publication and then notice of a public hearing to discuss the tax rate.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second by Mr. Dindel. Is there any other board discussion on this? Any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. And then, Dr. McFarland, you're up again.
Yes, sir. I'm up on the compensation consideration for the compensation increases and package for this upcoming school year. There was much conversation we had at the pre-agenda meeting. I appreciate all the input that we had from our board members and opportunity to hear the different concerns and suggestions and to be advocates for our teachers. That's what this board has done. They want to see, just as our district administration wants to see, we want to see that our people are compensated, that they want to be here, that we give them incentive to be here through a compensation plan that can honor them and their time and their commitment to San Angelo ISD. So taking into those considerations of things that were mentioned last night or last week, I redid the compensation consideration package. You've seen a preview of it in your Friday facts and here it is for you so that the public can be aware of it. So what we're looking at for the T family, which is the teacher family, it includes teachers, librarians, RNs, is to offer a general pay increase of $1,600 and ensure that a 3% increase is there based on salary. So in other words, if $1,600 is not 3% of the higher-end salaries for some of our more veteran teachers, we'll ensure that they at least get the 3%. So it could be above 16, it will be above $1,600 for teachers that fall under that 3% at $1,600. So that would be an offering for all teachers and all employees in the T category. We'd also up the salary, the second bullet point, from the beginning salary, which is now $41,500, $41,500, and move that up to $45,000. And pay range boxes would be adjusted. And what that means basically is if I'm a zero-year teacher this year, I was at $41,500 and a zero-year teacher next year would be at $45,000. And so we'd ensure that that teacher moving from zero to year one would not be under what that new scale would be saying. So that, those adjustments would be made throughout and that would affect pretty much everybody on the scale there. As far as the T family cost for this, we'd be looking at a cost of $1.68 million. Looks like I got million squared there. It should just be 1 million. $1.68 million would be the cost of this proposal in the T family to the general fund. But we'd also recommend for all other families is a pay range adjustment of 2%, in the pay range boxes, how we would adjust those. And the reason, again, that you adjust those pay range boxes is so that you don't have a constriction from your minimum to your midpoint. And also that you don't have, not just minimum to midpoint, rather, minimum to maximum. And you don't have a constriction of people in there as well as it allows you to continue to move your boxes and have opportunity for growth so that people aren't always at the maximum range and they have opportunity for room to grow and this board to give raises to those people. What we would do with that, with those boxes moving, we would say 3% of a general, is a general pay increase from the midpoint for all other employees that fall into the non-T family of employees. When we make that adjustment, the approximate cost for that recommendation right there is about $620,000 to the general budget. When you look at the base salary and the soft cost, $2.3 million is what we'd be looking at for the base salary to adjust for all employees. The soft costs, which include things that we include with the additional costs that we pay for TRS benefits and TRS on behalf and unemployment compensation and different benefits that the district is obligated to pay would be about $340,000 with that increase for a total of $2.64 million for that total increase for the general fund. We'd also recommend the district has been offering in previous years a $500 insurance supplement to go to employees to help with increasing insurance costs that have continually not just hit people in the district, but hit people throughout the community and throughout the nation. And so what, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one here. What we have done, going back here, what we've done here is the district has offered to pay out of the different health plans that TRS offers and active care, health plans that are offered through our healthcare system, is the district makes a contribution to allow for employees to have an opportunity to accept that level of health insurance at no cost to the employee only. Previously, and we've always done that with the lowest-cost health insurance plan, and last year, that was $386 and the district made a contribution of $390. So the lowest-cost plan last year was $386. The district paid $390 so that employees could opt into that plan and have no cost to them. However, if they chose a higher plan, they would still get $390 applied to that and pay the difference for their monthly health insurance contribution. With the rising costs, that has picked up to $417 to be the lowest-cost plan for the district. And when you look at $417, the difference there from $390 to $417, that goes by per employee per month. So that comes out to about $635,000 of an increase for the district in that particular cost. What I was mentioning earlier here, as I was mistaken on the slide, what we have done previously is offer a health insurance supplement, a $500 health insurance supplement that gets paid out in December of every school year. And that is to help offset increased insurance costs that employees have. And so we're going to continue to do that in this recommendation is to offer that $500 insurance supplement to employees. New to this, based on conversations that were had out of the board and recommendations that came out in those conversations, a heavy look at how can we retain employees in this district? So a series of retention bonuses that we're looking at for the district. What we'd be looking at, first of all, if you are a returning employee to the district, you worked with us last year, you are returning this year in September of 2021, as we begin the new school year and new fiscal year for the district, those employees would receive a $500 bonus as a returnee. Then, if those employees are still with us in May, or rather, at the end of the school year here in 2022, they would also receive a $500 bonus there. As well as employees who just joined us this year would also receive that $500 bonus. So essentially, if you're a returning employee from last year to this year, you have a chance to receive $1,000 in a retention bonus. If you are brand new to us this year, just starting with the district in this year, you have a chance to earn a $500 retention bonus at the end of the school year. And then the last step in this, going further, is that looking out, how do we retain employees beyond one year's time? And so this one is looking at a two-year window. If you are with us at this school year, starting this school year, and you end in July 2023 and you are still with us, you'll have an opportunity to earn $2,000 bonus at that time. So again, an offering to try to maintain employees beyond one year and an outreach to hopefully see if we can keep more people on as an incentive there as a retention bonus. When you look at the overall cost of the retention bonus, we're looking at about $4.6 million over the next two years. So counting that 2,000, it would go to the employees that stayed for the two-year period. All of the retention bonuses will be funded through the SIR III funds, which is an allowable cost expense for those funds that are being allocated to the school district. Overall, the total budget impact for the general fund for salary benefit increases is about $3.275 million. So you've got about $4.6 on the SIR side, a million. Then just to the general fund, which you will adopt in August, the impact of this salary recommendation is about $3.275. Questions that I can answer?
Anyone have questions, Dr. McFarland?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, I just have a comment. And again, I wanted to lift up in the development of our compensation plan, there are really multiple components that were important to our Board of Trustees and I want to lift up two of those. Those were, how do we protect and keep our classroom teachers in our system? So how do we keep our classroom teachers in our school system, SAISD? And the second, how do we retain these quality employees over the long haul? So not only how do we, you know, keep them in the classroom, how do we recruit new teachers, which you can see is the increasing of the new teacher hiring schedule? But how do we retain over the course of many years? And I think it's just critical when we think about this because it's not only our classroom teachers, but our board believes in highlighting, for example, we have two sitting here. Jason Henry, Director of Purchasing. We need Jason Henry to stay in our school, in our system. We need Jason Henry to stay in our school, in our system. We need David Creek, the Director of Maintenance and Operations, who, who has highlighted more than ever before the work during the past pandemic year. We need individuals like this coupled with our classroom teachers to stay in our school system for that consistency and that high quality that they bring every day to our students and the school system. So I just wanted to, again, raise those two areas. The retention is huge and also the hiring. Our Board of Trustees, along with our administrative team, we have studied many sources of documents, evidence, not only with like-sized districts across our region, but across the state as well. So how do we recruit and retain our quality teachers and keep them in SAISD? So I just want to, again, highlight that those were two important prongs and components of our compensation plan as we develop that for our Board of Trustees as well as our cabinet team.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff. Does anybody else have questions for Dr. McFarland? I'll mention this for our audience, that we had, as Dr. McFarland mentioned, much discussion about this last week and this is not the same plan that we started with. We've, and I appreciate you, Dr. McFarland, going back to take the board's comments and add things to this. So I know that takes a lot of work on your part, but we appreciate that. Well, with that said...
Max, I do have one. I don't know if we've done this, if we did it last year with you, Dr. McFarland, but we've, at least historically, we've seen any revisions that were made to stipends, that was provided to the board as well. So if you'd send that to us in Friday facts or something like that, I think that gives us an idea of, you know, what type of stipends we're paying because a lot of that has, I mean, to attract quality people, a lot of that's done through stipends and, and other extra pay. And I wanted you to just make sure that we're in line with that.
Yes, sir.
So thank you.
Yes, and would you also, when you do that Friday facts, let us know what happened with the other health insurance plans, you know, not just the minimum with the ones that were up above?
Oh, sure.
Just so we'll...
I can give you a comparative document that shows...
Yeah, just so we'll know how, how our teachers that takes, that pay for the extra will have an idea what those costs are. All right. With that said, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll attempt. I'll use this guideline. So I would make a motion that we approve a general pay increase of $1,600 and ensure a 3% increase if the $1,600 is under a 3% raise for any of the returning employees in the T family. And we implement a new starting salary for anyone in the T category of $45,000 for any teachers with zero years of experience. And then we would adjust pay scale for other teachers accordingly. In addition to that, we would have a 2% minimum adjustment to pay ranges and a 3% midpoint general pay increase for eligible employees in the administrative slash professional information technology, clerical, paraprofessional and manual trades jobs families. We would also make a revision to the item I just mentioned, pay plan for temporary seasonal extra duty positions and stipends where the district also intends to increase the health insurance contribution on a monthly basis from $390 to $417 per month. We would also maintain a $500 insurance supplement for all employees to assist with rising insurance costs. Additionally, we're adding, the district's adding this year, a $500 retention bonus for all returning employees who worked for the district in 2021, who are returning again to workforce beginning in August. That will be payable in September of 2021 because that's our new fiscal year. And then an additional $500 retention bonus will be given to any staff member who starts the year with the district, whether they're a new employee or whether they're one who worked for us in 2020, 2020, 2021. And if they're here at the end of the school year 2021, 2022, they'll be eligible to re, for that additional $500 retention bonus. And then finally, we're adding a $2,000 retention bonus for any staff member who begins 2021, 2022 school year with the district and remains with the district until July of 2023. That's too many 20s, July of 2023.
That was a much better explanation than I gave, Mr. Lehman.
So that's our pay and, and a lot of that is covered by SER funds, as you mentioned, as, as a board member. This isn't part of my motion, but certainly we need to be careful.
But did you get that motion?
I did.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Well, well, well stated. Mr. Lehman, is there a second?
Mr. Parker, I'll second that with the, with the inclination that Mr. Lehman also mentioned that these, a lot of these retention funds are going to be paid by SER funds. In addition to these, these bonuses are eligible to all returning employees, not just the teacher fund because we saw how important...
Right.
All of these, all of our employees became during the, the past year and that if we can, we can hold on to them and keep them, it's an asset for us.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. So you have that down. We have a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Dindel. And I will ask you, Dr. McFarland, while you're there, we're, we're using terms that some people might be tuning in that don't have any idea what you're talking about with SER funds. Can you give just a brief description what SER funds are?
You bet. The federal government, in response to the COVID pandemic starting last, last spring, or not this past spring, but the spring of 2020, I guess it was, spring of 2020, when that began, they passed what was called for, there were three different plans that they passed, but from the school's perspective, they were able to funnel federal funds to public schools in the form of what they called SER, which stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, E S S E R. And so that's what we refer to as the SER funds. And in doing so, they have given us three different implementations, SER I, SER II and SER III, in which the district will receive federal funding as a one-time shot stimulus, if you will, to help recover learning loss, to help the district adjust to, to needs that, that were failing from loss of student attendance and, and those type of things in the previous year.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there any other board comment or questions about this particular agenda item? Is there any public comment?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where it asks, or where it says revisions to the district pay for temporary employees, does that include substitute teachers as well or is that a separate payment plan?
That's separate. So we use temporary employees in different capacities. And then, Mr. Lehman, I wanted to go back to yours on stipends. And I've been in contact with Dr. McFarland over here because we work jointly on that. We've had minimal changes. We'll definitely get that to you on the stipends themselves, but we should have definitely gotten that to you guys. Sorry, we spent a lot of time working on the compensation and totally forgot the stipends.
Not a problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Isabel Flint. And I was asking if there was any public comment. No one's coming forward, so I'll call this for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The motion passes. Thank you, Dr. McFarland and your staff for all the work it took to get that prepared. All right. I think that covers everything that's on our agenda. We have announcements that we have a finance pre-agenda workshop August 9th. We have a SAISD convocation on August 11th at San Angelo Stadium. We have a regular board meeting on August 16th and our special meeting to adopt a budget on August 30th. It's not on here, but when do we have our new teacher, recognize our new teachers?
I have that calendar invited, about to hit send. August 3rd is our new to district tailgate, so that's our new venue. We'll be out here on, in the parking lot closest to Pays. We're doing that from 8:30 to 10:00. So hopefully you still have your jerseys. In case you don't, we ordered an extra for Mr. Lehman who might not know where it is. So we'll wear SAISD jerseys and then casual attire on the bottom because we will be outside. And we'll have our community partners. We do anticipate it being larger than last year, so we're expecting a great turnout. Hopefully the weather will cooperate. 8:30 to 10:00 Tuesday, August 3rd.
And then is there a, do the teachers all then go meet somewhere for further instructions that you...
Yes, so our new to district training kicks off that day. So we'll start off there. That's kind of our big welcome to our district. Then from there, they go to their campuses. Then the fourth and the fifth, we have professional learning. If they are, and notice we're saying new to district, so it's any new professional employee that we've hired. Then on the sixth, if they're a, a professional that's evaluated with T tests, we will train them in that evaluation tool. And then all teachers report back full-time beginning August 11th.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And Dr. Gomez, we, since we're on our public access channel, channel four, members of the community are encouraged to come to that as well, correct?
Absolutely.
So it would be great if we could have community members come and welcome all of our new staff members, welcome them to San Angelo. And so if you don't have anything to do the morning of August 3rd, I would encourage the members of the community to get out and do that. And it's not that hot in the morning, so come on out.
That's all. We're finishing by 10:00 because after 10:00 you might bake.
Well, before we adjourn, I have one matter that should take five minutes. We need to go into closed session to, to Texas government code 551.071, consultation with So we'll be back in just a few minutes. All right. We're back from executive session. We took no action, took no votes. And with that said, I'm going to adjourn our meeting.